Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council. It's Monday, May 23rd, 2022. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey? Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes from previous meetings of May 2nd, 2022, which was a special meeting of the city council, and then May 9th, 22, which was another meeting of the city council. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Grace. Any substantial changes? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Next item is presentations and public input. We have no presentations scheduled. We'll go to public input. If members of the public wish to address the city council, please come up to the microphone and state your first and last name for the record. All right, seeing none, we'll move on. We have no presentations. We do have a proclamation in honor of National Historic Preservation Month, which I'll read. This is, "Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas, the city of Urbana has a historic preservation plan and currently has designated 18 local historic landmarks and three historic districts. And whereas, historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas, it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas, the downtown Urbana Historic District was added to the National Register of Historic Places on August 27th, 2019, encompassing seven city blocks and 41 contributing resources, including three locally designated landmarks. And these include the Urbana Lincoln Hotel, Bucy's Hall, and Tyrrnens Block. And whereas, owners of commercial and residential historic properties continue to renovate their landmarks to the glory of their former heyday, including residence in the Buena Vista Court Historic District and the restoration of the Urbana Lincoln Hotel into the Hotel Royer in honor of its designer, Joseph Royer. And whereas, the Urbana Historic Preservation Commission is promoting the enjoyment of our local historic resources through a guided walking tour of downtown Urbana Historic District in observance of National Historic Preservation Month. Now therefore I, Diane Wolf-Marlin, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2022, as National Historic Preservation Month in the city of Urbana, Illinois." Thank you. And we will file this certificate with the historic preservation commission. All right, move on to council input and communications. Grace.
Thank you. I just want to ask about a check-in for the ARPA accelerated track update. I thought last week we were told in a week we'd have an update. I didn't know if that was going to the next committee of the whole or what the plan was for that. I'm also still interested in a discussion on the logistics and legality for hybrid meetings. I think this is important especially for the commissions and things as well with COVID cases increasing. And then also wanted to just do a quick announcement for the Contractors and Connections mixer tomorrow, the 24th at 7:30 registration, 8 start at the Phillips Recreation Center, I believe. And feel free to correct if that's not right. Thank you.
Correct. Any other council input communications? We have no update on the ARPA process tonight. Sanford Hess is preparing a memo on the logistics, both technical and logistical on hybrid meetings, but it will be a while for that. Unfinished business, I don't believe we have any. Reports of standing committees. Jaya.
On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I'd like to make a recommendation for the following three items for approval on the consent agenda. Resolution number 2022-05-04R, resolution authorizing intervention and pending property tax assessment appeal before the Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board, Family Video Movie Club 1901 South Philo Road. Resolution number 2022-05-041R, resolution authorizing intervention and the pending property tax assessment appeal before the Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board, Walgreens 302 East University Avenue. And resolution number 2022-05-04R, resolution authorizing intervention and a pending property tax assessment appeal before the Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board, Neighbor House Attorney, 1002 South Lincoln Avenue.
I'll second. Moved by Jaya, seconded by Mary Alice. Will the clerk please?
That's, that's-
I'm sorry. Chandra.
Yes, thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
And then the first of our items on the regular agenda, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I'd like to recommend ordinance number 2022-05-015, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance, R7 University Residential Text Amendment, Plan Case 2438-T22, for approval.
Is there a second? I will second that one.
Further discussion? Mary Alice.
I just wanted to let council know, Kevin had left a message that I didn't have an opportunity to return, but I had asked a question about multifamily and the minimum amount of space needed to make an apartment. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you said 300 square feet roughly, approximately? So for other committee members who were interested in that, I, you know, it depends on the size of the house. My guess is most of those houses are between 2,500 and 3,000, so a maximum of maybe 10 apartments, but you've got to put bathrooms in and everything, so 10 is pretty pushing it. So I just wanted to share that information, counsel.
Thank you. Grace.
I had two things. One, just wanted to confirm that nothing has changed since last week on this. Is that right? Okay, thank you. And again, just I wanted to say that I appreciate the, you know, creative solutions and compromises of staff and the community and everyone's kind of patience and willingness to find something that seems to work.
Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Second item on our regular agenda, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I'd like to recommend ordinance number 2022-05-018, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance, Solar Energy System Text Amendment, Plan Case 2425-T21, for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Jaya, seconded by Chandra. Any discussion? Grace.
Thank you. I also wanted to say on this one, I appreciate the, you know, creative solutions and openness to input on this one, and I hope that we can see a lot more solar going up in Urbana. So I don't know if, you know, there's already a plan for there to be some kind of an educational or publicity piece about this, or maybe it's something that just happens as people ask for it. But I would love to see this kind of, as it seems to intend, increase the solar development in Urbana. Thank you.
Further comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Jaya. Next item is reports of special committees. I don't believe there are any. Reports of officers. I have a couple of announcements. One, you probably heard that our county has moved into the high community transmission rate according to the CDC. The main impact of that, from an internal standpoint, is that in the city we return to masking indoors in city facilities and also has an impact on testing and travel depending on your vaccination status. This week, we begin interviewing the search firms for, who will conduct, who we will choose one of them to conduct the searches for both the Chief of Police and the Community Development Director search. So we have interviews today, tomorrow, and Wednesday, and we hope to have a selection made very quickly for that. And we were notified on Friday of last week that we were eligible, the city was eligible to enter the portal and apply for the second tranche of ARPA funds. So that application has been made and we'll let you know as soon as those funds are received. Okay, we'll move on to new business.
May I ask questions on that?
Sure.
Thank you. One was if there's any changes for like public or commercial places for COVID regulations, or that's just the city facilities?
The only thing, it's city.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question was, I thought there was talk of possible public input for the search. Would that, that would be later for the individual candidates? Is that correct?
Yes, the search, the choice of the search firm will be made internally, but then we will work with the firm to develop the process for both of those searches. And of the two, the public, the police chief search will have, involve much more community, you know, involvement, so.
Thank you.
So as soon as we get the firm selected, then we'll work with them to nail down the details of the process and we'll be sharing those publicly. Okay, we'll move on to new business, which is, first is ordinance number 2022-05-019, which is an ordinance repealing ordinance number 2020-12-069, which is pertaining to ratification of emergency order 20-12. And I'll go ahead and introduce the second one as well. These are related. The other ordinance, 2022-05-020, which is an ordinance repealing ordinance number 2020-07-037, pertaining to the ratification of emergency order 2006. These are both repeals of emergency orders that were passed in 2020, between March and throughout 2020, we passed a number of emergency orders to respond to conditions of the COVID-19 pandemic. And we've slowly, either they've expired or we've been repealing them to the point where I think these are the last two emergency orders, other than the overall emergency order, which still remains in effect. And that's, I prefer to keep that in effect until the state order is lifted as well. So that gives, that's the overall branching one. But the first of these ordinances that we're looking at tonight, repeals the emergency order related to financial assistance for aid in paying sanitary sewer and stormwater utility fees. And this was a joint program with the city of Urbana and the Champaign-Urbana Sanitary District. We wrote off a total of about $532.99 worth of fees, and the program is now not needed because there are other sources of funds. Well, there was another source of funds obtained through a grant from the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission. And then the second ordinance deals with an emergency order that was passed to waive, temporarily waive rules related to use of public right-of-way, public sidewalks and that sort of thing, and parking requirements. And this allowed us to provide more flexibility to businesses to conduct business outdoors and utilize public right-of-way. And again, it was one of the many, many ways the city supported businesses and individuals running those businesses during the pandemic and actually made it safer for the community to shop as well. So that is no longer needed at this point either. Grace.
Thank you. I was assuming you were opening for questions? Is that right?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I was trying to understand this utility program. And so it's if there's an owner-occupied home that qualifies for lie heap and they're behind on their sanitary sewer or stormwater utility fee, then that would be covered and charged as a write-off to the city? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and so you're saying that's the $532.99 that the city has paid in those kinds of services since then?
Well, it's basically, we didn't receive it, so we waived.
I see. And now there are other programs that are filling this role, you're saying? And that's why it's not needed?
That's correct.
And could you specify what that is for, if anyone is looking?
It's through the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission.
Thank you. And I had another question about the other emergency order. I was wondering how or if this would impact the curvana and parking lot uses and things that we've developed?
There's no impact on the curvanas. The curvanas are a separate program. And actually, they, I'm glad you brought that up. They will be installed within the next couple of weeks. And they are installed, it's a, it's a program with a specific business. So, so there's no impact on the curvanas, other than that we encourage their use. Yeah, Chandra.
And the, the second repealing of their emergency order, that doesn't hinder like sidewalk sales for stores or anything like that? This was just like use of parking lots or other spaces that aren't normally used by retails?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it actually allowed, if, if businesses wanted, it also allowed for the use of the parking lots themselves, so. So it was, so when you saw a tent go up next to the Courier Cafe or you saw the tents go up next to Rose Bowl or in Bunny's, that, that's what was facilitated by these ordinances. We had a flurry of emergency orders in 2020. Mary Alice will remember, yes.
Is there, is there a way that businesses, if they want to leverage their own personal parking lot? I know Courier, I believe, owns that parking lot next to them. Are they able to put up a tent?
It would require a permit, yeah.
It would require a permit?
We have a permitting, a regular permitting process, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. And for example, when Bunny, well, that's not a, that's not a privately owned parking lot, but Lot 2 Bunny's will often get a permit to put up a tent in Lot 2, which is coming up soon, actually. I think there's an event coming up soon. Yeah, these, you know, these, these things, these particular ordinances just made it a little easier and faster and it made it easier for us to respond to requests from businesses during the pandemic. And, you know, they taught us, we can do things different. You know, they taught everybody. It was, you were able to do things in a different way. So we learned a lot during the pandemic. Grace.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for the clarification. And I was wondering if you could clarify a little bit further, because it looks like this also includes an application process for permit under the emergency order. And just the way I see it, especially with, you know, just announcing that we're at a high COVID case risk right now and there's, it's always mutating, it just seems like it's, it's not over. I think this would still be helpful. And I was wondering if you could clarify kind of what is the practical difference of this order being in place versus not?
I'm not sure what you're asking, actually.
Yes, I'm just asking what would the hypothetical, what would it change if we keep this order versus if we do away with this order? You're saying maybe the permitting process is more streamlined? I'm just not seeing what the difference is and what it would change to end this emergency order.
Well, this allowed actually use of sidewalk right-of-way that typically, I don't think was available before. Yeah.
I mean, I would think that business owners currently are not using outdoor space as much as they were before. Even with the increasing rates, I don't see them going back to doing like just outdoor seating. I think you, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but I think that most, the, the reason why most people were doing outside stuff is because there was a statewide order for people not to be indoors. And so they had to use the outdoors. And so since that order has gone away, then restaurateurs and things are not doing as much outside. That's just my take on it.
And they can, they, a retailer can still have a sidewalk sale. You know, they can set things up. You can still get a permit for a parking lot, but it's just, these, these were kind of allowing you to have a, do it on a daily basis before. And it actually was very useful for 2020. Also in 2020, there were no vaccines and people had no choice. If they were going to be open, a lot of them needed to be outside. Yeah.
I just wanted to, to bring up that this order would allow businesses to leverage the actual sidewalks, which would create an accessibility issue. So it was a temporary, I think that it's appropriate that we go back to, although this is discussion. So I'm just going to say that I think blocking sidewalks is an accessibility issue for people in wheelchairs or people who have trouble walking.
Although we did require that they maintain accessibility, you know, a certain width for people. Okay.
I guess we're going to take these one by one. So I'll move ordinance number 2022-05-015, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance, whoops, sorry.
019.
That's the regular, my bad. I will turn the page. Okay, here we go. Ordinance number 2022-05-019, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 2020-12-069, pertaining to ratification of emergency order 2012.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
That motion passes.
And I'll move ordinance number 2022-05-020, an ordinance repealing, yeah, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 2020-07-037, pertaining to ratification of emergency order 2006.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by James. Further discussion?
I, I just, I have a question. I wonder why we're doing a roll call for these? These could pass by voice, voice vote, couldn't they not?
They're ordinances and they go for the law.
Okay, thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll? Further discussion? Yes.
Thanks, just a quick one. Just wanted to, yeah, state that I think keeping it would be good. I think the more outdoor stuff we can facilitate, the better, especially with having to maintain a clear walking way anyway. So I would be in support of keeping this.
Go ahead.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
No.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
No.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item under new business is resolution 2022-05-043R, which is a resolution authorizing intervention in a pending property tax assessment appeal before the Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board. This is for the Hampton Inn at 1200 West University Avenue in Urbana. Carol is ill tonight and can't be here. She did send around to you the information you requested about the name of the property, the address, the assessed values, and the difference between the board of review value and the owner's opinion of the value. And this particular resolution is, is identical to the others. It just was, we just overlooked adding it to the list from last week. Any questions, Grace? I hope I can answer them.
Thank you. Yeah, just wondering if you happen to know if, if or how these work together? Like, is there any bundling benefits that it goes in one case? Or these are all still individual cases?
I believe these are individual cases.
Thank you.
Chris.
Yeah. So is our assessor, Wayne, is he going to be the, I don't know, party into this? I mean, is he going to be arguing for the city? Or will this be transferred to the city attorney?
This would be our legal.
Okay.
Legal. And they work closely with Wayne.
Okay.
Yeah. Grace.
Just a question off of that. Is it though that it's kind of the property owner against the township assessed value? Or are you saying that's still the city? Is the township assessor not involved after?
This is the town, this is the assessed value from the township, but they're in the city of Urbana. And then this is the owner's opinion versus the assessed value.
So is it kind of our legal representative working with the assessor? Or are they not part of it anymore?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Chandra.
I'll make a motion to move resolution number 2022-05-04R, a resolution authorizing intervention and a pending property tax assessment appeal before the Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board, Hampton Inn, 1200 West University Avenue.
I'll second. Moved by Chandra, seconded by Jaya. Further discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. Last item are appointments and reappointments. This is the time of the year when terms on our boards and commissions come up for some of the members. And typically, we will reach out to the members, ask if they're interested in continuing. At this time, some people decide that they're ready to stop, and we have had some resignations. And we're putting together a list of now the new vacancies on boards and commissions. But I have tonight two appointments and the rest are reappointments. The first two are appointments to the Civilian Police Review Board. We had two vacancies. We had a total of four applicants. They were all very good. Two of the four applicants had passed affiliation in one way or another with law enforcement field, and that, per our ordinance, disqualifies them from serving on CPRB. So, but we do have two excellent applicants that I bring to you tonight. The first is Peggy Patton. She's a 40-year resident of the city of Urbana, retired U of I early childhood and education professional. She had a three-decade career where she taught in the Child Development Laboratory, trained students in child development, founded and directed the Childcare Resource Service and was a research information specialist with the Early Childhood and Parenting Collaborative. From her application, she writes, quote, "I believe our city's approach to policing is central to the health of our community. Participating in the systematic means for continuous improvement in police-community interactions, which is a chief mission of the CPRB, as I understand it, is one way I can be part of that critical process. I'm interested in Urbana's innovative approaches to policing, such as the new crisis co-responder pilot. Serving on the CPRB would provide me an opportunity to understand and shape both current and new policing practices," end quote. Peggy understands in her interview that fairness, integrity, a commitment to public service are key qualifications for serving on the CPRB. She has served for 12 years on the Urbana School Board and has served for many years as a community volunteer in local schools and nonprofits. And then the other candidate is Ashley Withers. She's a 30-year resident of Champaign County. She works as the lead employment specialist for Community Choices. She works with job seekers- seekers with developmental and her intellectual disabilities to identify skills, strengths, ideal working conditions, overall employment goals, to make a mutually beneficial job match with Champaign County employers. She said, quote, "As a longtime Urbana resident, I have a passion for this community and its potential to be better, the last few years of increased crime has made me realize how important it is to get involved wherever you can, I believe I can serve as a member of this commission neutrally, read into the facts of each complaint brought forth in order to give appropriate feedback." She has a baseline understanding of how officers are trained, and believes that police officers should be held accountable, and should uphold the integrity of the department as a whole. She also serves on the Urbana Park District Advisory Committee. Is there a motion? Mary Alice?
I'll make a motion, um, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve Peggy Patton and Ashley Withers to the civilian police review board with the term that ends on June 30th, 2025.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mary Alice.
Um, I just want to say that, um, A, I, I really appreciate the detail that's being provided, um, I know that this is a continuation of the past year, I think it's really helpful, um, and very pleased that we have two really, um, diverse candidates in terms of background for the civilian police review board, I think that's very helpful for us, um, to get different kinds of perspectives with different types of groups, so, so thank you for bringing these two forward.
Any other comments? Okay. Well, uh, could we just do a voice vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I will, uh, uh, also say that we quite likely will have another vacancy soon, so we'll still be looking for candidates, uh, can't say right now, but, but it looks like that we may. Um, next up are reappointments, these are all people who have served and wish to continue serving for the Arts and Culture Commission, and you each have, um, uh, short descriptions in your packet as well, Barbara Hedlund and Luis Gonzalo Pinilla for the Civil Service Commission, Tracy Nally for the Design Review Board, Adam Rush for the Fireman's Pension Fund Board of Trustees, Elizabeth Hannan for the Historic Preservation Commission, Alice Novak, and we just changed the name of this board, I, it's the Building Safety Code Board, yeah. We, we merged, we merged this one.
I think when you announced some of these people, that you put them on the wrong board, they're, they're on, they're on the right one here, but they're...
Which one?
Uh, Adam Rush and...
Yeah, I think you just read it off center, or off, like...
I read it off my, uh...
The name of the board is off the name of the people. Can you read it as below the name of the people?
Oh, okay, Civil Service Commission, Tracy Nally, Design Review Board, Adam Rush, Fireman Pensions Board, Elizabeth Hannan, Historic Preservation Commission, Alice Novak, Building Safety Code, we'll get the right name, but you know what I'm talking about, Gary Burgett, Sustainability Advisory Commission, Thomas, Tomas Delgado, and Jessica Lemkow, and then the Urbana Free Library Board of Trustees, Beth Shide, Gloria Yen, and Sharice Hersi as the Urbana City Council Rep. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of all these reappointments for terms ending, all of them, June 30th, 2025.
James.
I'll second, can I have a question?
Yes.
Uh, for the Urbana Free Library Board, these are all reappointments, can you tell me how many years each of these appointees have served?
It may be in your packet, let me read.
Let's see it.
Gloria Yen has been on there a year and a half, um, Beth Shide has been on there a number of years, I don't know, but she's been on there many years, and Sharice Hersi came on when she, um, joined the city council, three years.
And it, it's a three-year term?
Yes.
Did you, um, ask other city council members if they were interested in serving on the
No.
library board when the time came up?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor, please say aye.
Oh, I saw the, oh, sorry. Question. Also wanted to echo, thank you for all the detailed information, I think that's really helpful when we're making choices, um, so I appreciate all of that, and I noticed that just, um, you know, Elizabeth Hannan's doesn't have a description, which I imagine is because, um, you know, we're familiar and have kind of read her bio and other positions, um, but also just a thought, I think it's helpful, especially hearing from people directly, um, you know, if they're able to write us a few sentences, what they do, why they want to continue, I think it does help us have, um, a little bit more to a person and a decision.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion passes. With no further business before this meeting, we are adjourned.